Good evening. I would like to recall to order this Board of Education meeting. It's a special Board of Education meeting of Tuesday, April 3rd, 2012. We have been in closed session since 6:00 PM for the purposes of probable or imminent litigation, employment of employee, and collective negotiations. I will note that all seven Board members are present, none are absent. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda this evening is public comments. Three people have indicated their interest in addressing the Board this evening. When you come to the podium, please turn on the light and state your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. It is not the practice of the Board to respond to public comments, but I want to assure you that we are listening carefully to what you have to say. The first speaker is Paul Pokryvki.
My name is Paul Pokryvki, and I reside at 868 South Stratford Avenue here in Elmhurst. I have been a middle school physical education instructor as well as a middle school coach in District 205 for what will be 20 years at the end of this school year. As a representative of the middle school physical education and coaching, I am not naive to think that by coming here tonight and speaking in front of you, the Board of Education, Superintendent Purno, and the rest of the administrative team, that my words would convince you not to make cuts to middle school physical education, or sports, or any other programs throughout the district. I am aware of the budget constraints that we face as a district, and also realize that cuts need to be made in order to meet our fiscal responsibilities to both the students as well as our community. Last year, I was part of the EPR process and had the privilege to speak in front of the Board, administrators, as well as the community members, about the direction physical education is going within the District 205. A lot of time and energy was put into creating that report, and I hope that all the new Board members have had an opportunity to read it along with the other reports. It was a consensus of the Board at that time that physical education should be protected and no reductions should be made. Four years ago, the district received a PEP grant that infused $1.3 million into the physical education program. Significant changes were made at all levels of physical education, including major changes to the middle school program where there was a significant increase in student participation. A reduction at this time would not only increase the student-teacher ratios, but it would also decrease participation and invalidate the money, time, and effort toward progress that has been made within our programs. Two weeks ago, Mr. Bloom made a comment regarding middle school sports. Mr. Bloom mentioned that local parent-managed athletic teams such as Airborne and public entities such as the Elmhurst Park District could absorb the numbers of student athletes from the middle schools. The importance of our three middle school interscholastic sports programs goes beyond competition. Instruction and skill development, sportsmanship, and maintaining high academic standards are just a few of the concepts taught at the middle school level. Introduction to the IHSA eligibility standards and codes of conduct give our student athletes the information necessary to make a successful transition to high school athletics. Two weeks ago, Mr. Collins made a comment on how he has grown to dislike the spring because of all the cuts that have had to be done. I am sure that there are many here tonight who also agree that this time of year, which should be joyous, has taken on an air of stressful anticipation as difficult decisions are made. As Mr. Purno stated at the last Board meeting, once we make these cuts, there is no bringing them back. I would like to extend an invitation on behalf of my fellow colleagues with middle school -- in the middle school disciplines of physical education and coaching to each Board member to come to our schools, see how our programs run, ask us questions, talk to the teachers, coaches, students, athletes, and parents, find out what the true value is of our programs, not just how much money can be saved by reducing them or even eliminating them. Thank you for your time and your attentiveness.
The next speaker is Cynthia Crane.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Berquist-Cranz, and in addition to being a parent of two kids in the district for their whole lives, I'm the Executive Director for the Elmhurst Symphony. And I am just seeing some of the cuts for the first time, or proposed cuts, but I just wanted to speak with the attention to the proposed cuts, especially to the elementary school music program. And that would be with the disappointment that the kids wouldn't have the private instruction that they do at this time. And I think that that has an impact on their whole music instruction, all the way up to the high school level. And we're very fortunate to have a very strong music program in this district that has been represented with the Elmhurst Symphony, to the extent of having our string program students in the high school participate in a side-by-side with us last year on one of our concerts. It was a very exciting program and one that I don't think would be possible if the kids hadn't had that kind of expert instruction from the very beginning of their instrumental program. So thank you very much. I just wanted you to consider that.
And the last speaker is Christina Udenberg.
My name is Christina Udenberg, and I live at 155 Columbia Avenue. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening. My husband and I have been residents of Elmhurst for 14 years, and we have four children in District 205, two at Field, one at Sandberg, and one at York. I myself have been an elementary school teacher for 21 years, so I speak to you tonight from the perspective of an educator as well as a teacher and a parent. I have always been proud to tell people that my children attend District 205 schools. However, my feelings changed dramatically when I read the disappointing list of proposed cuts to the budget. First, librarians are experts in the field of language and literacy as well as technology. They are valued resources to teaching staff as well as to students. So at a time when the common core state standards are demanding higher expectations of teachers as well as of students, why would we eliminate these indispensable staff members? Additionally, the reduction of music education has a multi-tiered impact. There are numerous studies that link the strength of a music education program directly to student performance in other academic areas. Also, a strong music program is a foundational element of the reputation of academic and educational excellence for District 205. An elimination of that program, or a reduction in any way, would not only harm present and future students in the district, but also adversely impact the Elmhurst community by damaging the district's stellar reputation. Overall, the list of proposed cuts is a disappointment because the majority of the items promise to directly and negatively impact student learning. I would urge the Board to thoughtfully reexamine this list and seek to find alternative budget cuts that would not impact student learning directly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your comments. That concludes our public comments section of the agenda this evening and takes us to Superintendent Communications and the fiscal '13 budget. Mr. Purno.
Yes, this evening, as you know, we would like to have this opportunity for the Board to discuss the recommendations for budget cuts for the 2012-13 school year at this time. And I want to reiterate, our timeline is really especially related to certified staff that at the April 10th meeting next week, we will have to have a clear indication of what budget cuts that we are going to be instituting due to the riffing process that has to occur with certified staff. And as you know, under the budget cuts that are recommended, there is certified staff that would be reduced in force based on the recommendations that are on this list. Let me also say, and I said this at the last meeting, but all of these budget cuts are at the point after three years of continual reductions in our budget, that we are at the point where some of these things are going to affect key parts of our school district. And that was true last year, and I'm sure it was true the year before. When we get to this point after the third year of budget cuts, if there was any anything that was frivolous or could have been cut, it was cut a long time ago. And all of these positions, all of these programs are critical to our success. Can we survive and continue to grow with these cuts? I believe we can, but I think it's going to take more work on everybody's part to do it. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have an alternative. We have to balance the budget. Our expenditures and our revenues are not matching up due to the economy, due to state funding, due to a variety of reasons, and we will have to make those budget cuts that you have been recommended at the last Board meeting. Clarification, and I know the Board knows this, but I'm not sure from the comments I heard this evening, the public understands this. The budget cuts that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that the administration is recommending at the present time for the Board to consider. We provided the rest of the list for Boards to understand, Board members, that there are alternatives to the budget cuts that we are recommending, and you as the Board have the obligation, responsibility to look at those alternatives and to consider those. But when one of the comments was, "We are looking at middle school PE programs," that is not on the administration-recommended list right now. That's an alternative that we place there, but that is not a recommendation. Same thing with instrumental music. That's not on the list at this present time. That is not part of the highlighted administrative recommendations going into next year. So I just want to make sure people understand how that concept of all these budget cuts operates. We are looking for $1.2 to $1.3 million in budget cuts. As I said in the past, for the certified staff, it is a worst-case scenario. I really hope that as the school year progresses and as the year progresses, we will be able to recall some of these positions once we know more about what our budget revenue numbers look like going into next year. But right now, being conservative and being fiscally responsible, we have to do budget cuts based on a worst-case scenario. I am really trying to be optimistic and say, "This is probably the worst it's going to get." We're hoping it gets better, and we're hoping we can do some things to bring some of these positions back. So with that, again, what the administration is looking for tonight from the Board of Education is a clear direction on where we're going to go. We have a very short window. We have to prepare a RIF list, if that's the direction the Board wants us to go with these recommendations. By April 10th next week, we have to notify staff. We would like to do that personally ahead of time for those people that will be affected. We want to meet with the union to make sure they have a clear understanding of how that RIF list was developed. So we're under a tight timeline. We would like the Board to really consider and give us clear direction tonight. If you think there are alternatives and other directions you would like us to go, we will need to hear that clearly tonight, so we have time to work on that and bring that ready to go to the Board on April 10th. So with that, I will either open it up to questions that the Board may have about the budget cuts or open to Board discussion.
Is it possible for us to get the yellow and white sheets up on the screen so people who perhaps were confused will now be able to see what's in the yellow and what's in the white? It probably is all run together in their minds. Thank you. Board members, discussion on the fiscal '13 budget. Mr. Collins.
Can I start with the transitional Spanish program? Can we just talk about exactly what that would entail? How many students are involved? And what those students' world language instruction trajectory would look like if we eliminated the transitional Spanish program?
It's a middle school program. It typically has two sections, so maybe somewhere between 40 and 50, 55 students. What we would typically do is start there, depending on the need of intervention that they might have, we might start their Spanish the next year. So if it was an incoming student as a seventh grader from another community who needed some intervention time, instead of having transitional skills, I'm sorry, transitional Spanish, we would put the student into an intervention time, and we'd start the student's Spanish the following year at a lower level of Spanish.
What you're saying is that a sixth grader comes in from a middle school, from another school or just one of our own that just needs some intervention time. So they would skip Spanish in sixth grade, and then in seventh grade, once they're strong enough in their other academic areas, they would enter sixth-grade Spanish as a seventh grader?
Yeah, that'd be an option.
And the total number of kids in all three middle schools is in the 50 range, is that?
No, I'm sorry, Jim, I can't give you an exact number. I think we have about two sections at most per building.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking for a ballpark.
So we would have multiple sections.
So 50, 90?
A section size, I typically think between 25 and 30, two per school. I don't think we have that many at Churchville since it's a smaller school, so certainly under 150 and 180.
So if we eliminate that, are we derailing any student who would want to learn a world language from learning a world language?
We might be postponing it. A student might have to take it a following year. In many of those cases, students coming in from another district might not have the same level of Spanish as our existing Elmhurst students do.
I just want to make sure that we don't derail a student, and that we don't, maybe a better way to phrase is, "We don't deprive a student of the opportunity to learn a world language at some point in middle school and then therefore enter a high school world language program at a deficit."
In the vast majority of cases, your concern is not problematic. And students who have extensive learning needs in the core of either reading or math, that might be very difficult for us to pull off because we want to get their reading proficiency or their math skills to an appropriate level first. But there's a strong commitment to world languages in this district. I think your concerns are pretty uniformly felt.
Mr. McDonough.
On the utilizing targets as opposed to hard-line caps, K through 8, what, we talked about it as simply softening a maximum into a target. What kind of standards then do you use to make sure that without knowing it, class sizes don't creep up in some sort of uncontrolled way?
What I would envision is that probably during the months of June and August, or I'm sorry, July and August, we would be looking at all of our class sizes based on new enrollments and begin to make decisions about where it is that we are. Are there certain sections in certain buildings that are more problematic than others? And we would be looking at that in an entire summary section. Our intent is not to have class sizes at the elementary where the target is 27. Our intent is not to be running those classes into the 29s or 30s, but rather simply to be making decisions based on the whole perspective of what we have in District 205. The same thing would happen at the middle school when we begin looking at, once the sectioning is done by our building principals, we know for a fact that there are going to be some sections where a building principal is not going to be able to schedule students in the same fashion as other sections. So second period might be fine for seventh-grade science, for example, where there's 22 kids who fit into that class. However, because there are a bunch of kids who need a class during seventh period for that same science class, that class may be at 36, 37. We don't think that that would be a reasonable piece. So we would work with our building principals at that point in time to give them an extra section or an extra .2 FTE to alleviate the overcrowding that is in that particular section. So we would be using conversation with our building principals. We would be using the understanding that we are uncomfortable going much above 27, but looking at it from the standpoint of if we have four sections of third grade in a building, and right now, all of them are sitting at 27, 27, 27, and 27, and a new student moves in, one new student, do we open up another section at that point in time, or do we run three sections at 27 and one at 28? Where it might be a different conversation if, let's say, four new students move in in that particular grade level, and now we're looking at running all four at 28, that would be a different conversation. But by having the target as opposed to the cap, it allows us to have a conversation about that, to determine, is this the time to open it? But again, we're not looking to artificially flood classes into the 30s. That's not the intent with looking at the cap versus a target. The intent is just to look at it from a perspective to say, is this the time to do it? Does that answer your question?
It does. The decision will be made at the district level to make these additional classes or not.
Correct. That is how we envision it at the current time. And again, it is about looking at it from the perspective of, do we have one student push us into that level? Now, at the same time, just to be clear, we have also been working with our building principals specifically, especially at the elementary, where we know that there are some grade levels where maybe that there is, for whatever reason, a higher number of ELL students than maybe in other grade levels. Or it is a grade level where a building principal says, "This just happens to be a particularly needy group of kids that if we could, this would be a place where we would like to err on the side of being under the target than right at the target." So we are using that type of discussion with building principals to make an informed decision as opposed to simply one that just says, "When the X number of students comes into the building at a particular grade level, we automatically roll the class."
Mr. Collins, you have a follow-up?
A similar question that Brad, I think you answered part of my question, but, you know, as I talk to teachers in the district and particularly elementary teachers, they say that the kids that actually, the individual kids that actually comprise the class, you know, in some cases, a class of 25 might be, you know, totally manageable and just fine, and then you have other classes just because of the composition of the kids in the class that a 20-kid class is completely unmanageable. And I just want to hear a little more, you touched on it, a little more about what we're going to do to take that into consideration. It's this class size issue, particularly at the elementary school, that bothers me quite a bit as we slowly inflate class sizes every year. I just don't want to lose the quality of our elementary education because we have overloaded classes.
One of the things about that, when Mr. Purno and I were sitting with all of our building principals earlier in, seems like spring, but I guess it was probably late winter, but as we were sitting with our building principals, we were having conversations. And at that particular point in time, there were building principals who said, "Okay, the average class size in the seventh, in the fourth grade right now is sitting at a 26." But they would then go on to say, "This particular class at 26 is more of a concern to me than potentially the fifth-grade class that is sitting at 27." And then at that point in time, they would articulate those reasons to us, whether it be an increase in high-needs special education students, whether it be just a large number of special education students, whether it be, as much as I hate to say this, a large number of boys within a particular grade level that might need a little bit more of a divide and conquer. It could be a number of reasons, and we listen to those reasons to be able to understand the group of kids as opposed to simply rolling the class when the number increases. So we're trying to use what the building principals know about their students and what we know about our financial considerations to be able to make the best decisions about when to increase, or when to increase the number of sections within a grade level.
And when it is kind of a discipline-management issue, I mean, do you have a strategy to maybe use more aids in the class? I mean, how does that discussion look?
I think I would have to add too, Jim, that not only is Brad working and Mr. Purno is working with the principals, but when it comes to certain groups of special education students with degree of severity, everyone in my department is also involved in those decisions too and making those recommendations. So you have a building principal. In some cases, you have an assistant principal who is a little bit more in tune at times than a principal about what's exactly going on with regard to discipline and with particularly difficult students, as well as the special ed supervisors, who are all getting together and taking a look at not only the special ed students, but students who maybe have needs who have not been identified yet, students who are receiving a great deal of intervention but have not yet been made eligible for special ed, maybe never will, as well as just the temperament or the structure in the classroom that the teacher has and what is actually going to be able to be accomplished in that class.
One more thing that I forgot to mention is that we are doing the same thing with ELL, with Karen Militari and Charles Johns. So we are factoring in as many of the people who know about our students as possible to make an informed decision.
The other thing I want to add, just so you're clear, is when we did, again, this is a worst-case scenario for staffing, number one. Number two, we met, Brad and I, along with Meg and my cabinet team, were involved in meeting with each individual principal, Brad and I did, to sit down and look at their numbers and to talk about their concerns at particular grade levels when we were tight. We took detailed notes on that, that we have with us now. So as I'm hoping that the staffing loosens up and we can start recalling people after April 10th, we would target those particular buildings that we've already had those discussions with to say, "Okay, we were going to add staff back based on those circumstances," as they have mentioned, special education, ELL, a group of kids in one particular grade level that just has, it has been problematic going through, and the principals have said, "You know what? We need to lower their class size." The other thing we would work with the building principal is, if the principal comes back and says, "You know what? I can live with 27, 27, 27, 28, but I'd really be helped with an aid." We have done that and considered that, put an aid in that grade level or in that particular class for a specific reason that will alleviate, alleviate the kind of educational program that they have there to make it an increased improvement in that without adding a full-time teacher to that. Now, that's not to say an aid is going to replace a full-time teacher, but there are some things that an aid can do to alleviate some of the issues that go along with the higher class size.
Ms. Hirsch.
On the topic of class size, particularly in the elementary school, not to be contrarian, but I think it's worth noting that we have made significant investments at the elementary level over the last couple of years. We hired eight ELL teachers. We hired, we placed a reach teacher at each of our buildings so that we had additional supports for our students who needed to, you know, were above grade level, moving ahead. I think we also have seen some changes in the way that the elementary school day is structured with block scheduling for reading and for math, I believe, at all the elementary. So I think in addition to trying to keep class sizes down, I think there are other investments that we've made. investments that we've made as a district that might not be as apparent in terms of, you know, how many little bodies do you have in that kindergarten room? How many, you know, third graders do you have in a classroom? I think there are significant investments that we have made over the last several years to try to augment and support all of our classroom teachers, as well as the particular needs of the students in those buildings. So, while it doesn't negate the fact that, you know, class sizes over the last three years are creeping up, there are investments that we have been making to support those students. Maybe, Mr. Johns, if you could maybe talk a little bit about the structure of the elementary day and how it's changed? I don't know if you, how well you can speak to it, but the block scheduling, having the entire building, or grade-level reading at the same time, flexible grouping, and those kind of things?
Well, to a degree, I can't talk about change so much as what I see in place now. So, well, at least with as much confidence. So, in many of the schools, most of the schools, you see a great deal of effort made to extend language arts time and math time, because those are both critical skills. Many of the teachers, in my experience, have exhibited really strong instructional capacity in terms of breaking students into small groups within their classroom to make classrooms much more manageable. We have done a great job of utilizing specialists and support personnel, so that when students need very targeted support, the classroom teacher can continue the lesson, and those students still get their targeted support. And then, we have flex groups, so that we have different ability-level students being taught according to their ability levels. So, looking for a variety of different ways, both to deal with the size of students that we have in the classes now, but also to show really top-notch instructional practices.
And when I'm visiting classrooms, especially in the upper elementary, fourth and fifth grade especially, I'm seeing more grade-level grouping than we ever have before. I think what you referred to is block scheduling, where the four teachers, or three teachers in a grade level, are really doing a math block and are dividing the kids up into targeted groups for instruction, which really helps with that instructional model. And in talking with the teachers, they've had a lot of success with that. I think in some buildings, it's only in the first and second year, and yet, they're seeing very positive results. So, when I talk to teachers, when I visit, I get a lot of positive feedback about that model, about doing that. And then, if you have a reading specialist available during that block, you're going to reduce not only those kids, but you're going to separate those kids into four groups rather than three for reading instruction, and now you've got inherently smaller groups in the reading instruction during that block period. And so, that's another strategy that we're starting to look at.
Ms. Ebner, you had a hand up, right?
I'd like to talk about the class sizes too. It may sound like a broken record, but at the last meeting, I talked about the EPR process, and last year, the community ranked class size very high, saying that they did not want a cut in class size. And that ranking was basically overruled, and class size was cut. And again, which I said last time, is then that increase in class size went all to the elementary and middle school. There was no increase in class size at the high school. So, I just want to be equitable that, you know, when we're going to increase class sizes, it needs to be across the board and not just targeted at a certain age of students. So, I am a little concerned about the first line of our cuts, just because of that history, and also, there's a reality too, of the day-to-day operation of having a larger class size. And I get a lot of complaints from parents and just community members about how the class size has creeped up over the years, and it just doesn't seem like something our community tolerates very well. And then, the other thing too, maybe this is a long-term thing, but when you talk about fourth and fifth grade, I completely agree, but I think third grade should be categorized with K, K first, second, third. And I'm just throwing that out there because that's, I get a lot of complaints from third grade community members, parents that have third graders. So, I don't know if it's a mature, you know, a maturity level, like fourth grade is a different year, and kids start maturing more, and larger classes are tolerated better. So, I just wanted to have, you know, put that out there for other board members to think about. And I just want to ask you, Brad, too, one question. When you talk about having the targets, would there be a scenario, like at field school, where there's four sections of third grade right now, or maybe, let's say there's 20, 20, 20, 19, is there a scenario where that would turn into three sections of 27, or, you know, 27, 27, 28? Is that, would that be happening, or is it just for kids that come into our district in the summer, it's an extra student? Can you provide some insight on that?
Can you give me a second just to do the math?
I know, can you? I mean, it's like 81, it's 81 is the cutoff. It's, you know, 27 times three is 81. I'm just wondering if there's a scenario where that type, that type of thing can happen.
The numbers that you provided would put us into the range where we could run three sections at 26, which would still be under the cap of 27. So, we would be seeing that there would be the contraction from moving from one particular grade level of maybe four sections to when we move to the next grade level, third grade, where we would see that at this point in time, they would be scheduled for three sections. So, we are running some classes that, and I can't tell you the number and how many different buildings that this happened, but there are places where in third, in second grade, there were four sections, and it's, and at fourth grade or third grade, it's going to be running at three. So, we do have that, we have scheduled for that at this particular time, simply because the numbers that you provided in your example would still put us, be under 27. But even if the number wasn't the same as the ones you provided, if it was, if it didn't exceed the target of 27 point something, then we did go with the smaller number of sections with full well-knowing that depending upon the number of students who may transfer in, we may be opening up a fourth section, and that we would be looking to make those decisions in July and August to be able to meet the board's request, that we are running close to the target as possible. And again, that's where we're looking at that average, hoping to stay within the 20-point something.
But if you do that, it's going to be a lot larger FTE than four to eight. How do you decide which ones to condense?
Right now, we're sitting with 11 sections throughout the district where we are running into that particular piece. So, what we're looking at is giving you a range. We could have given you a range that said eight to 10, if we followed that, but we didn't think that that was realistic. So, we tried to factor in, hopefully, that all 11 sections throughout all of the eight elementaries do not roll into the next, to the next number. How do we factor that? How do we make that decision on a couple of pieces? One, in consulting with the building principals, the special education staff, the ELL staff, to look at, is this a particular grade level in a particular building that could potentially handle the fewer number of sections? But also, looking at it from a, I mean, not to bring everything back to money, but also looking at the budgetary implications of how many other sections can we continue to roll into going from four, going from three to four? I mean, those are budgetary concerns that do end up impacting the overall budget. So, it is looking at both. And that, I think, is why we would like to make that decision in July and August, and Dave can correct me if he disagrees, but by looking at them in the totality of the district, we're looking at it from a perspective that it isn't that we're giving the rollover or the, giving another section to the first grade level that gets it, but rather, looking at it from an informed decision about each individual piece to factor both the best thing for students, but also the cost.
Ms. Stufen.
I don't have a specific question. The way that I'm looking at this is themes, okay? I know that this community values rich educational experience. That includes music, that includes the arts, that includes world languages, you know, intramurals, all the things that you learn, how to be a great student and citizen from all of those educational experiences, and that's what this community has always valued. So, I guess what I try to look at here is themes, and I'm looking at not just the last two years of cuts, but for many years now, more and more cuts in those, I'm going to call it non-core curriculum. And at some point, you look at our wonderful high school that offers so many things to our students, and I don't know how we do this, but, I mean, that's what this community is about, and I understand that we need to balance it fiduciary responsibility. But at some point, we have to be able to understand, as we cut music, as we cut all of these other things at the elementary level, at some point, you cut them so thin that, should they even exist? And I'm not saying they shouldn't exist. What I'm saying is, what, how do you really look at this to say, are you exposing, are you allowing some money, enough money, to be valuable to kids at elementary and middle school in order to have this richness at the high school? So that they, given all the peer pressure and everything else, are they going to not have these experience, or enough rich experience, and then they're not even going to expose themselves to that risk at the high school? So, I really want to throw that out there. I don't know how we wrap our heads around it. I've been trying to figure that out. I've been trying to look at through the EPR process, that I was, I'm going to say, blessed with going through that experience, which I know a lot of people didn't like it, but the philosophy behind looking at the value and the meaning of programs that we offer, and getting community input, and saying, how does that impact this district where we are lucky to have it from elementary through high school? So, I'm just trying to understand better the linkages between them, and how can we make a more thoughtful decision on budget cuts? One example, a very simple example, would be libraries. Okay, so, we have in our yellow sheets, we have that we would suggest decreasing a certified librarian at the high school. And if I recall correctly, we have librarians and assistant librarians, right? And I don't know all the details. So, what, I guess, Dave, if you can help me understand, let's say librarians across the district, what do we have at the high school? I know what we're proposing in the yellow sheets, at high school, middle school, and then, we have in the non-yellow sheets, the, like, the backup cuts, if you will, the reduced for middle school librarians, as well as potentially librarian assistants. And then, we have the same for elementary school. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it looks like there's a theme that you all did look at, is, okay, we understand that that resource is valuable to our students, and we need that, but, you know, we're looking at, what can we cut back without making a huge impact? And we're suggesting to do it at some, like, at some levels, the high school, but not necessarily the elementary, middle school. Is it because we cut previous years? Is there, can you explain the rationale?
No, I think, again, Karen, you're trying to put, you know, you're asking me to put a logical explanation of why we're doing this cut. You know, there's a logical explanation, but for me to sit here and say, whatever cuts are on that yellow list is not going to affect our program, I'm not going to tell you that, because it is going to affect our program. I think the logic is, with York having two librarians, reducing by one saves dollars, we keep the library services open there, it'll be reduced service, but we still keep that librarian there, and we keep York functioning. If you reduce middle school librarians, you are dramatically affecting the library services at the middle school to a much greater effect than I think you would, in our judgment, at the high school. So, that's a trade-off. So, again, this is all about, at this point, it's all about very ugly trade-offs. So, let's say the board says, we don't like the elementary cuts of class size. Okay, then, start looking at the list and the alternatives, and what you're looking at, just based on the priority on the white sheets, you're going to be reducing the district office receptionist, classroom technology budget, elimination or reduction of middle school librarians, and reduce middle school PE teachers. Now, it's a judgment call. In our judgment, we felt the recommendations in the yellow were less dramatic, less impactful than the ones in the white at this point in time, and that's how we went about it. But it's certainly open for discussion, and that's why it was presented to you that way, as the Board of Education, to make those determinations. In our opinion, the recommendations on the yellow, while, you know, not what we would prefer to do, are less impactful than the ones in the white at this point in time. And we're open to a better way to do this, but quite frankly, that's what it got down to. What do we think the impacts were? We met with building principals, we considered staff input into that, and then came up with these recommendations.
So, just to clarify, I'm going to still use the librarian example. So, let's say, so that I understand everything that's here, is what do we have at the high school? What do we have at the middle school? What do we have at the elementary today? Do we have librarians and assistants? Do we have multiple at different schools, or is it consistent across all the schools, depending on the student size?
No, we have, I believe we have librarians at every school. We have two at York. We have library assistants at all levels, and so, that's the area you start looking at. Because it's not, what we try to do, and what we try to do is keep the cuts away from core classroom basics, which was, and we already touched it, class size. We already had to hit that. But again, if you don't take those kind of support staff cuts, you're looking at more and more core cuts in the classroom, and that's the alternative you're going to have.
Mr. Collins.
And, I mean, clearly, what resounds, or what's communicated to me by the community is that class size is an issue, keeping cuts away from the classroom, and a rich curriculum is important to this community, meaning music, the arts, things like that. So, in an effort to minimize the cuts in those areas, I mean, one of the things that stuck out at me here is we're talking about reducing some of the, what I'll, I guess you can refer to as extras, like middle school student council, which, I mean, we have to reduce something, you know, and as important as student council may be at the middle school level, you know, it seems like a logical place to start. But then, what struck me is, but then, we still have elementary student council. Are there, are there programs at the elementary school that are extras, that we could, if we reduce some of those, and, you know, we, in the vast majority of our elementary schools, we have very, very active and dedicated PTAs that, on a volunteer basis, may be able to take some of these things over? You know, I just wonder, you know, in an effort to keep class sizes smaller and more manageable, are there extras at the elementary or middle school, you know, beyond just middle school student council? Monies that could be redirected toward those core things that our community values?
We can certainly look at that. Just for clarification though, Jim, we are not eliminating middle school student council. We're reducing the number of stipends there, but we still believe there will be student council, maybe at a reduced kind of activity, but student council will still be there. So, again, the thinking was, trying to keep all levels, kind of even if there's student council at the middle school, we'll keep student council at the elementary school. But we certainly can look at the whole issue of stipends, both at the elementary, but I would also say then, if we're going to look at that, we look at it all the way through K-12, including the high school. And that will have an impact on what we offer kids as activities after class, and maybe that's where we're at.
Ms. Hirsch.
Kind of along that line, there's a budget item that we're looking to reduce that stipends budget reductions at the high school. Examples are given, library assistants, assistant coaches, secretarial, tech, and vocational. It's a block number of 140,000, but we don't have a lot of detail. There could be effects to TCD, student services, administration, library services, intramurals. Could we, I don't know if anybody along our table here has a handle on what types of cuts specifically we're looking at. I agree with Mrs. Ebner that we've taken cuts at the elementary school, at the middle school. I don't know how much we've really absorbed at the high school level. There have been a lot of fees imposed at the high school level, but not so much in terms of elective offerings and the types of offerings that we have right now. So, do we have any insight in terms of how the high school is looking at coming up with that 140,000 number? Is that number a solid number? Do we feel confident that that's going to be? Do we feel confident that that's going to be doable? Any insight in terms of what those types of cuts would actually be?
Those types of cuts would be looking at activities, let's say, in athletics, where we would be looking at removing the second assistant coach from a lower level, from, not a low-level sport, but from a freshman sport. So we would not be eliminating the sport in its entirety, simply removing a coach who is an assistant coach at a particular level. So there are several, several sports that are in that particular category. There also is looking at reductions that are associated with, one of the things you mentioned was the fine arts program, I'm missing the name of it off the top of my head, where we would be reducing the number of students who would be going out placement from 10 into five, I believe. And we would also be looking at the reduction of-
TCD.
TCD, a secretarial support within York High School as well, the elimination of one of those spots. So it is a variety of different pieces that the administration at York feels is viable and will allow, obviously, viable to the standpoint that we will continue to be able to offer services, but the degree to which those services will be offered will be impacted. And when you were talking about the exploratory classes, that would be mentioned up in the increased staffing ratio at the high school.
I think the challenge that I have is reducing elementary music for all students versus continuing to offer something like a guitar class, an advanced guitar class. I mean, there's got to be some kind of balance. We are given specific line items to approve or disapprove or agree or disagree with, in a particular curricular area, at a particular grade level, but when we get to the high school, it's really kind of masked. There's really not a lot of detail. So, you know, I don't know if we talked about the way that the high school offers electives, and we have a course catalog, and we allow students, if I understand this correctly, and I'm not a scheduling expert in any way, but Dr. Johns, I'm looking at you because you've had this experience before, but it's my understanding that our, our high school scheduling is student-driven. So we have a course book, we offer everything that's in our course book, based on students selecting to opt in to guitar, or advanced guitar, or dance. Then we, we run those classes, and I think we were talking about tightening those up, but any insight you can provide in how we're going to make, or how the high school is going to make these decisions in terms of art, business classes, family and consumer science, industrial tech? I mean, we're also including math and social studies. I'm not very clear on what specific cuts we're looking to make at the high school.
As you related, high school scheduling is very complicated, and the process that the high school intends to use is pretty consistent with what we would see other high schools using all over the area, which is, in your elective program, you're going to let student interest drive much of what courses are actually run, as much as you can do it. When you get to a level where the budget is impossible, you have to key back to the, you have to scale back to just the core curriculum. So at this point, what you're seeing is essentially peeling off one of those layers of elective classes that are available. Ways that a high school can do that is you don't run a class. If the class size is too small, you up the threshold that is necessary before classes are run. You look for ways of lower enrollment elective classes. You look to do what we call stacking, where you might have multiple levels of a program that are all offered at the same time. You might see this in some of the specialty arts classes, where you might have several levels of 3D art all being taught at the same time. It's tricky, it's not easy for a teacher, it can be quite hard, but it is a way to maintain some of these specialty classes that kids really like, and often find maybe a career interest in. In the other areas, we're looking to increase, particularly for the more core, the classes that are in the core, look for ways of consolidating a little bit, and looking at a number threshold for the number of students in a class, where we can pair off a section here or there. So it isn't, we couldn't be, we couldn't say at this point, we're going to run one fewer section of 11th grade English, but we are looking to find ways across all the numbers of sections at the high school to squeeze it down by one. But we're not exactly sure where that's going to appear. It depends on enrollment, it depends on interest levels of kids.
I think, you know, one individual person's feedback, you know, maybe to be taken back to the high school. I mean, I believe that we, our community wants a broad and rich curriculum, but we're at the point now where there are some things that are considered part of our core curriculum. I think art and music in this community are considered, they might not be the tested subject matters in terms of ISAT testing or MAPS testing, but I think that those are things that we've invested in heavily. We start instrumental music in fourth grade. I mean, we've invested in these things. And I think, you know, I think that's obviously the will of the community. So we just need to find some normalcy at the high school, and maybe narrow a tad, so that we have a little bit more balance moving up the educational experience.
Ms. Stufan.
Can I just add to that? I guess, the last two meetings that we talked about the budget cuts, and we talked about class size from K to eight, and we say it targets. And I understand at the high school level, it is, you know, student-driven, right? But there's got to be parameters around it. Are we talking about those numbers? Can we socialize those? Can we get a little bit more information before everything's made final decisions?
What we did in giving the budget reduction piece to the high school is we began looking at their overall student-to-teacher ratios that they were running at last year. And from that, we began to look at, is there a way to ask the high school to decrease that ratio and bring it down a little bit, so that way, or bring it up, so that way it's more students per teacher? And with that, we did provide the high school with the fact that we needed to see approximately eight FTE needed to come out of the high school right off the top. And what we ended up doing, or what we ended up putting onto the high school, is that they ended up providing a list of reductions in departments that they were looking at. And the difficulty with providing that to you is that that is a fluctuating piece, that depending upon where student interest is, that sometimes the high school is going to be trading a .2 FTE in this program with a .2 FTE in another program based on student need, but still maintaining that FTE. The other thing that they did, and which is what you're looking at, the $140,000 of other reductions, is that they looked at other ways, simply just by eliminating class size. So it is a combination of looking at the overall picture of York. Are there certain extras that could be decreased or not as supported? And then, what classes could we potentially see decreases in? Whether it be increasing average class size, or whether it be decreasing the certain sections or certain courses that are offered? Or potentially, as Dr. Johns says, stacking various classes with one another, so that way, if we are going to offer French AP and French IV, instead of having, you know, 12 kids in each of them operating in two different periods with two different teachers, and that being an increase, could they potentially be run at the same time in the same classroom? I may not have chosen the best example, Dr. Johns may have chosen a better one, but that's, but that's really what we're, what we're looking at to try to tighten that up. In addition, we are looking at all the, all the class sizes at York, and beginning to ask those questions, and York is very open to those conversations.
I guess that I just would like to see a little bit more of balance, and I completely agree. I mean, I have a daughter who's a senior, and she's, we're doing French, and French IV and V are in the same class with the same teacher. And, you know, math class is very high. But then, we also just approved some curriculum, some new classes that we offer, that we're offering at the high school. And I just want us to think more thoughtfully about, you know, we're increasing in some of our cores, you know, 30 students in a math class, and then offering some other electives, brand-new ones. You know, do we really need to do that? Is that the best proposals?
Yeah, I think the key point is what Brad started with in his response, is that Brad and I spent quite a bit of time setting up and understanding the ratios at the different buildings. There was some inequities that we found, or inequalities that we found, and we really pushed hard to get the ratios to be more in balance. That's the starting point, really, when we sat down with high schools, is making those ratios more common than they had been in the past. In terms of new elective classes, again, that's driven by student interest. So I can't remember, unfortunately, any of the classes which was offered, but take one, for example. And, you know, if we get 12, 15 kids in there, we won't, the history of rock and roll, if we won't, if we only get 12 students in the course, the course won't run. So it's an idea that adding new courses keeps curriculum fresh, is attempts to increase student engagement and interests, understand and reflect what's going on in the community and the workforce. If kids don't go for the, students don't go for those classes, they won't run, and it won't make a difference to us. What holds it all in check, again, are those ratios, that the high school has, between a reduction in FTE and a reduction in stipends, come to a dollar figure that brings us, we think, closer to our target point that's consistent across the district.
Mr. Collins.
I have two things. First, to Mr. Hillman's example, perhaps, perhaps, running an AP class more like a college class, where you have a big section size in a lecture hall, might have been a better example, because you have highly motivated kids who are in an AP class for that college experience. I would think you could give them that college experience of having a bigger lecture hall with perhaps some-
Is it going to be a bigger auditorium?
Yes, who, you know, I'll leave that to the experts as to how big that section is. But, but, I mean, I would think that there are some economies to be had in the high school without decreasing the quality of education, just in a slightly different format. But then my other, my other question is, our discussion with Mr. Purnell about, I just want to make my point clear, I wasn't quite finished with that dialogue, but about reducing some of the extras. You know, and I agree, there needs to be shared sacrifice along, along the entire spectrum, but, you know, we heard at the last meeting, some general thoughts about, you know, what could the PTAs come in and help with? And it just seems like, I mean, since we have such an involved PTA organization, particularly at the, at the elementary and middle school, they're, you know, much larger than at the high school per capita, per student. You know, it just seems to me that maybe the PTA could step in, and on a volunteer basis, take over some of these activities without completely eliminating the activity, but, but just having a, maybe a different staffing model for, for some of those things. And so we, we wouldn't take away the extra, we would just staff it slightly differently.
Mr. McDonough.
I appreciate your explanation about the difference between how the change in staffing ratio at the high school will affect the electives in the core. Answers a lot of questions I had. I'm curious if you can tell me what the reduction of the high school librarian, and the way that will be staffed, is gearing towards the way that our libraries are changing, or perhaps already changed, to reflect the way information now is disseminated, stored, catalogued, distributed, and how this plays into the vision of what our library should Well, you see it becoming. That's pretty vague, but I just want to see what your vision for, what a library should be doing, what a librarian should be doing, and how this affects that.
My mother was a librarian, so if she finds the video, I'm dead meat. You know, we're really in a difficult time, and in trying to balance everything we want for our children, and what we can actually provide them under the fiscal conditions that we live under, is, I don't think, no one's going to walk away satisfied, or believing that, that we've walked, you know, that we've really given them the, everything we want them to have. The future for technology and media use in, is, is wide open, and multifaceted, and I'm not sure that as a, as a profession, we have full understanding of what this is going to be like. We do know that kids need more research skills. We hope to, in the future, build that into the classrooms. We know that that will involve needs on our libraries, and so that's a concern of ours. But we're trying to balance that out with all the other expenses and needs that we have. We know that the program will change, we don't know exactly what it will be like, we still know that our, you know, that the program that we have put up in the yellow is still a program that is comparable to the districts all around us. We feel we can make an effective program, even with the cuts that we've put forward.
Do you feel like the librarian is a central role to our kids learning these new research skills? Or is the principal responsibility with classroom teachers?
I'm sure there are dissertations written on that topic, and I haven't read them. You know, I think, I don't know who I'd put the centrality on. The classroom teacher who puts together a learning experience that is, that is vibrant for kids, that is structured for them to develop skills throughout a course of study, or a librarian, I just know that both players are very important. I couldn't say who's, where it falls the most responsibility.
Looks like you're cutting in both, with the increase in staffing ratio and the decrease of a librarian. Do the library assistants have a role in instructing the kids to navigate the new ways of research?
I would like to give that more consideration. Certainly, they help kids on a regular basis, as they navigate the use of the library, checking out materials, using technology, using different resources in the library. I don't think that we have a staff that has a lot of staffing levels that have fluff in it. I think everyone's doing a vital job, and we're going to have to kind of resort some things as we move forward. It's just the difficult circumstances that we are in.
But that's a job that they're, the library assistants are responsible for that sort of role.
This is a tightrope that every administration who is forced to make cuts has to look at every time. How many people do you riff so that we can be assured that we will balance the budget? Versus, how many families do we upset by saying, you may not have a job next year? And you want to cut that as close to the line as you can, so that you don't go overboard either direction. Could I ask, please, what is exactly will affect or determine our ability to bring some of these teachers back that we may be forced to riff next week? I mean, you've kind of skirted around a couple-
Well, I think, you know, again, we are a long way out from adopting a budget. We don't adopt the official budget till August. So we are months away from knowing exactly what our revenues versus our expenditures are. Chris will tell you, this is partly trying to look into a crystal ball and see where we are. We have taken a conservative approach. I am hoping that conservative approach is very conservative, and that as we move forward, depending on what the tax assessment brings, depending on what the state brings, depending on our reductions in other areas, that we can start saving additional dollars, so that we get to July, we'll be looking and saying, we've got some surplus here above what our budget cuts are, and now we're going to start bringing staff back in these, in these categories. Can I guarantee that? I don't think we can at this point. But again, I'm trying to remain optimistic and say, if things start breaking our way, and we have trends, you know, for example, in healthcare, our healthcare dollars are increases are pretty conservative, and those are looking much more optimistic than we thought. If that continues, we may be coming back to the board and saying, Chris may come back and say, I'm more comfortable doing X now, and releasing some dollars that I wasn't comfortable doing at this point in April 3rd of 2012, but July in 2012 may be totally looking completely different, and we'll have much more confidence and be able to balance the budget and bring some of these back. Again, I don't think Chris is in a position, I'm certainly not in a position to make that prediction, but that's the optimistic part. Chris, I don't know.
Well, another big factor is what's going to happen in the legislature with the state budget, and what kind of state funding we're going to be looking at for next year. And then, I think, you know, our staffing changes all summer long, also, or the enrollment and registrations is another factor that will be impacting the budget between now and August.
So the big items are enrollment, number of special needs students that we need-
So the big items are enrollment, number of special needs students that we need to hire staff for, what the state's going to come up with in the end, what new laws are going to mandate what between now and the summer. Health, healthcare costs certainly, and all the other items that go into our budget. We need to give the board some, or the administration some direction this evening, so let's wrap up with a couple more questions from everybody. I think we'll go first with Ms. Eppner. She had her hand up earlier, sorry.
I just have one comment. If you add up the reductions, the, it'd be the third column, you add, add that up, the sum is 1.7 million. We want to reduce the budget by 1.2 million?
It appears that's what our target is right now.
So then we want, so you wouldn't, or even, you know, even the lighter side, the, the second column is 1.3 million. Can we, so these numbers are over the 1.2 million, so can we pull back on?
I wouldn't do that at this point, Shannon, and the reason.
You want to go over?
We want to go over because, again, you want to build this conservatively. We know, from experience, I know that some of these budget cuts that we are, the numbers that we put in these budget cuts, some of those are not going to come to fruition. You know, we have tried to estimate those, but in the end, they may fluctuate. Again, I would rather do it conservatively, cut as much as we have to right now, coming back and putting those things back once we have definite numbers, definite staffing, definite registrations and all of that to go forward. I think if you cut this too close and you cut it right to 1.2 million and numbers don't go your way, we may be back here in August saying, we can't balance the budget now, we got to come back and do additional cuts this late in the school year. I'd rather not do that. I would rather have the planning now, allow us to plan for this worst case scenario, get things in place, and then start bringing programs back as, if, if it really comes up to 1.7, we're not going to cut 1.7 if we don't need it, believe me. I'm going to be very anxious to come back and put that stuff back in.
Okay.
Ms. Hirsch.
I just wanted to recognize David Smith sitting quietly over there on the right-hand side of the room. The technology budget, again, somehow, Dave, you've been able to come up with 120,000 in reducing hard burn software and 78,000 in telecom and internet access for, I mean, $200,000 yet again. I believe that we cut your budget last year, I think, a half a million, and I don't remember what the number was the year before that, another half a million. Which, when you look at it from the long-term perspective, though, what we did when we passed the referendums in '06, we did a couple of things. One, we increased our ed rate, and one, we did all of the building that we had to do. And at that time, we had no technology to speak of, and we had one person who was in the entire district who had the responsibility of trying to move this district ahead in terms of technology. So we have spent way beyond what our initial projections were going to be when the '06 referendum passed in terms of the investment that we've made in technology, and we've come really far. Are we where we want to be? Are we where we can envision that education's going to be in five years? We're still on track, and yet we're cutting, you know, every year out of the technology budget. And I, I just want to acknowledge, thank you, first of all, for finding savings. It appears as though they aren't really affecting the level of service that we can provide, and we're still able, your team is still able to provide great service to all of our buildings and all of the staff, and I, I think that is commendable. I, I don't want to let this go by. Again, taking another 200 off the table from you, and it's something that I think you went and sought out and, and tried to find savings, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just comment on the reductions. I think most people who've been tracking the last few years realize that we did make some major investments in technology, and it took a lot to get to where we are, and we were able to pull back, and I think that's obviously the necessary and appropriate thing to do under the circumstances. And the, the level where we will be at, I think after this, will be about that maintenance level where we, the, the ability to move forward is going to be difficult, but I believe what we've invested in can be maintained and supported, and we won't be going backwards. We won't have to reverse direction, but I do believe it, under, you know, and I think under the circumstances, I think we have to prioritize our, our spending, but I do believe that it'll be more difficult to make that sort of forward progress going forward. We're going to have to, I think, and I've talked with Dr. Johns about this a little bit, too, in terms of changing, if we're going to change, and not if, but when, and how we're going to change, the instructional environment might take some investing that our existing dollars in different ways and finding other ways to move forward that don't require significant levels of additional funding. So I, I think we got over the hump in the beginning with getting, getting to where we are, but now we're kind of at a maintenance level, and we'll have to start to figure out ways to build new things in with where we are, so.
Mr. Bloom.
Sure. Dave, to your point, I mean, we're going through this exercise now because we've got to put a riff list together. This conversation is going to continue, and, and I think Karen echoed it a little bit, but, you know, I'd like to kind of bring it up again with, as we look at this list, you know, what are the guiding principles for what we did? I mean, you, you guys had a criteria in your mind where this, you know, impacted the fewest number of kids, stayed as far away from the classroom and the richness of our academic offerings. You know, maybe there are services that could be delivered in a different manner and efficiencies that come. I think we should continue those conversations, it would be helpful. I just have a hard time, and I think listening to this discussion, we had a hard time kind of pinpoint, okay, how many kids does this really impact? I mean, some of these things are in big blocks, some of them are in smaller blocks. My other fear is, is that the stuff on the yellow list is the ones for this year, but as we talked about last time, we are showing a projection that next year, the stuff on the white is going to be on the table. And I think we should be having the discussion now on a two-year look forward as far as a budget goes, as we talk about particularly the objectives that are governing the cuts, our philosophy on what we want to offer. We want to offer a rich curriculum, we want to impact as many students as possible. There are some things on this list that, you know, if I were to go through their criteria, I would give them ratings and rankings based on how many kids they impacted, how they impacted the classroom. That kind of a rubric would be helpful as we continue these discussions. I would also encourage us, you know, the consideration of other ways to do things. I mean, Jim brought up the stipends piece. You know, in my mind, I hate fees, too, but we never touched on the fee side of this where ultimately, when you get to a, a point where you're going to cut a program, is there an alternative where we may be able to continue to offer it but have it paid for? And talking to the community and saying, okay, well, here's the deal, I hate fees, but the alternative is not to have the program at all, so, you know, this is what we're going to do. So as we start to think through some of these things, are there opportunities on the revenue side to preserve some of the richness of the curriculum that way? And, and like, and I, I mentioned the two-year plan, because I'm just concerned that we're going to be sitting here, I mean, we, we talked about this the last time, we haven't talked about it yet this time. We're not done, you know, with, with the yellow list today, and I just want to engage the community in that discussion, like I said last time.
Ms. Hirsch.
I agree with you, Mr. Bloom. I think if we take the long, long-term view, I think the board has done a good job in the last several years negotiating our contracts. I mean, really, the majority of our expenditures are labor-related, and so when we look at tying our custodial contract, tying our PSRP contract to the CPI, I, I think if you look at the large picture, we really have to look at our labor costs, and we are tied to the CPI. I think, you know, I've been struggling with, why did we have to make several years, three years in a row, budget cuts? And I think a big point, it goes right back to the .1 CPI that we had several years ago, where our labor contracts were accelerating at a rate that is just greater than the increase rate of our revenue. And this, it, it was a critical point, and we're, it's taking us three years of cuts to try to get back to where hopefully our labor rates are going to be increasing or at least able to keep pace with, as well as all the other expenditures that we have, keep pace with our revenue stream. So although sometimes we get really bogged down, and this year it's 1.2 million, last year it was 3.5 million, the year before that it was 2.8 million, I, I think we have done over the last five years, long-term perspective, a pretty good, a much better job of trying to get our expenditures tied to our revenue stream and the limitations that we have. I think there are other things, though, that come into play. The state legislature challenging transportation, there was some talk in an update that maybe they won't even mandate transportation and won't reimburse us for it at all. There's talk of pensions being, you know, applied to the district. So I, I think, I agree with you, I'd love to look at a two-year budget cycle. I think if we take a step back and look at the long, five-year cycle, I think we've, we've responded to the challenges that we've had, and we've, we've done a better job of, of trying to link our, our expenditures to our revenue stream, and I think we've taken some good steps in the right direction, but it's, it's never easy.
The point is, we have a projection on the table that shows we need cuts next year. So regardless of why it happens, I understand the math, you know, we're not getting the new growth, which is a big influence, we're having enrollment growth, too, so even on a given straight CPI growth, you're still going to end up in a hole. We are going to be in the hole next year according to our own projections. Now, I hope the guys don't come true, but we are sitting here knowing that next year we're going to have this conversation. So I think we need to have that conversation now, and we've already cut everything around the edges, and we're hitting muscle now, and it's very painful. And, you know, I'm with Jim, I can't stand having these discussions. This is not why we ran for the board, was to cut programs. But this is a community discussion, and we're getting into the meat of, you're starting to see music show up, you're starting to see sports and athletics show up, you're starting to see art, language, very things that help the richness of our curriculum. And I don't want to have the seven of us sitting at this table here having this discussion next year without having the community involved. We've got a runway here, we see this coming. You know, I said this last time, let's start a community discussion around what the community wants to pay for. You know, because we are starting, I mean, when you get to the second page, you're starting to eliminate elementary music. I mean, and that's a discussion that, and that's a decision I don't want to make just the seven of us sitting here, we have to have a discussion with the, with the public.
Perhaps, Mr. Purnell, we can put on a future agendas, a discussion about the process that we're going to need to use in the future to come up with these things and how we can involve the community in that process, whether it's a modified Ebert or something completely different, or whether or not we're at a point where we can actually put dollars on programs and, and have all the information we need in order to do a good job of it. But I'm hearing that maybe that's what, the direction we need to go, because this is not going away, unless we can get some.
And I think we already started part of that. I think, I think the one step that we need to do a better job at, and I think we started this, is getting the community to understand how the budget is developed and what is the budget, and how do we develop that. Budget at a glance, I think, is a first step for that. I think we need to use that vehicle and do presentations to community members, to, to service groups, to a lot of people in the community, so they understand how we're utilizing the budget, where the budget is going, how that operates. I think that's a first step. And then engaging the community about, okay, how do, how, what are the choices now we're going to have to make going into the future? But I really think the education of budget, and it's, it's not an easy discussion, it's a complicated process in education to understand budget. But I think that's the first step in educating parents, community members about how we develop the budget, what are the parameters we use, and how we can move forward. So I want to thank, you know, Chris and, and Malia for putting that together. It's on the website, I think people should go there, look at it. I think you have a better understanding of just how that budget's developed and some of the challenges.
Ms. Hirsch.
If I could make a request, we, I think, talked tentatively, I think we had to approve a, a budget process, I think it was the last meeting, a formal process for adopting the budget. And one of the things that we did five, six years ago is that we had budget workshops over the summer, which actually were held at York High School in an air-conditioned room because we were still at Madison at that time. But it was really an object-by-object walkthrough of looking at our energy costs, looking at all of the components that make up the budget, and it was open to the public, and it was, I think, very, very transparent, and I'd be more than happy to share, I have my old 2005 budget workbooks that Pat Palmer, at the time, took us through. But it, it really was an opportunity for anybody to come and to really have a better understanding of this big, you know, this awfully large budget, and understand what all the components are that drive our expenditures.
We can certainly do that. If you'll recall, very few people came, and I think we do want to try to involve the community as much as we can in not only budget discussions, but budget cut discussions. So I think we, I think we need a discussion about how to move forward with all of this. In order to let our administration get on with the unpleasant business of balancing this budget, we need to be able to tell them if there are, is any of us who wishes to substitute something from the white portion of the list, which we haven't seen, into the yellow portion so that they can move forward. We heard a lot of talk about class sizes and how we didn't want to raise them any more than we, I mean, we've heard good, solid things about everything on here. No one is saying that there's anything on here that we really want to get rid of. Just because we haven't talked about it doesn't mean that we, any board member is comfortable with it, I'm sure. But is there anyone who wishes to take an item off the white, lower portion of this list of suggested cuts and put it into the, the top, substitute something in the yellow area, or are we prepared to say, as much as we don't like any of these things, these are the least bad choices, and move ahead?
Mr. Collins.
My only request, just to repeat, is that the administration take a little closer look at some of these extras and see if we can substitute some of those for, you know, the things that make our curriculum rich, the library, world languages, music, the things that are on the yellow section of this.
Anyone else? Mr. McDonough.
It's hard for me to judge whether to, there's, it's hard for me to judge the, the quality of the increased staffing at the high school. My first reaction is negative towards it, but if there are classes with 10 kids there, then obviously that's an inefficient use of resources. But to the extent there's a lack of choice of electives, things that, you know, as, I think it was Dr. Johns said, bring kids to a career choice or bring kids to discovery, I have a hard time seeing that happen at the same time that a middle school PE adjustment in staffing, adjustment in scheduling, isn't done. So I would prefer that sort of substitution, and I don't, I've heard that from a number of people. I got emails, I printed them out, I read them two, three times, and when I didn't think I had enough, I reached out for more emails and contacted some influencers, or not influencers, some, some informed people who I've dealt with in the past, and that seemed to be a common thing that they, not that they didn't see the value of PE, but they thought that compared to some of the academic pursuits at the high school, they would prefer to see those academic pursuits maintained.
Do you have what you need from us?
I guess with Mr. McDonough, his last question, I need some clarification about where the board wants us to go with that, because what I'm hearing is reducing middle school PE and taking those savings and putting it toward York High School. Is that what I heard?
It's hard for me to evaluate because I don't know. I mean, if there's a class of, of 10 people and you're creating a middle school problem, I can't make those, you know, quantitative judgments because I don't feel there's enough information here. But to the extent we are reducing the choices for these kids, as Jim said, make them college-ready without burning them out, introduce, as Dr. Johns said, a, a career choice, but not maintaining a, a classroom of 10 kids or eight kids or whatever is inefficient at the high school, I want to make sure those, those choices can be expanded. That's, that's why I say, it's, it's hard for me to give you a specific direction, but just a shift of focus towards maintaining academic opportunities as opposed to a PE which, you know, does have value, but I consider it as a lesser value than the academic opportunities.
Ms. Hirsch.
I actually, from my perspective, the middle school PE classes, I think, are rather large in terms of the number of students that we have, and I think that, given the physical abilities that we have, this is just based on my experiences in, you know, being, having two kids go through Brian and having seen Sandberg and, and the challenges that they've got, I think the PE class sizes right now, it is a mandated course, I believe, that in middle school we're required to offer, and high school we're required to offer all seven years. And, and so without state dispensation and allowing kids to opt out for other, either Unified Arts in the middle school or other courses at the high school level, I think with every kid taking PE, the class sizes that we have, I can't imagine reducing staffing at the middle school PE level. That's just from my experiences. I would, you know, defer to the administration to give us some more information, but at this point, given that I think that the second column is 1.3 million, we're looking that this is going to be. this is going to be conservative and that we wouldn't need to, you know, hopefully the goal is, we don't, we're not, we're not expecting to go into the white categories. We're looking at all of the cuts from a staffing perspective, from the yellow categories. I think if I'm understanding that correctly, unless somebody wants to substitute it up. And I couldn't support the middle school piece substituting up. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in.
Ms. Ebbner.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Maria. I, again, I believe the high school, we need to be a little more efficient at the high school. There was no adjustment in class size last year. And just to be equitable, I think it's, it's just an equity piece for me. And, I mean, then I would say the same thing for the elementary. I mean, so, it's like, how do you decide? So, I'm going to have to agree with Ms. Hirsch.
As I said before, these are not easy choices for you to make or for us to make. I think the press accurately described our struggles last week by saying that we're cutting into the muscle and we're, there's no, there's nothing extra at this point that we can possibly cut. And you've heard from the board, if you have other questions, let us know. But you need to move by, what, the next meeting, wait for tonight?
And we'll start this process tomorrow. As soon as tomorrow, we'll be meeting and talking about implementing, what the implementation would look like. Let me thank the board. I know this is not what you ran for the board for. I know these are really difficult discussions. So, thank you for being thoughtful and looking at these. I also want to thank my cabinet, my full administrative team, and the whole staff for helping us with this in a very difficult situation. I know we're always looked at sometimes as the bad guys who make these recommendations, but I just want the public to know that my cabinet especially spent hours and hours agonizing over these cuts. These are not easy, and we try to balance, what I think I heard this community say, a robust, broad public education that tries to reach as many kids as possible, and at the same time, trying to reduce our costs within the district. And that's a very difficult process to go through and try to juggle what those are. But I can tell you, there was thoughtfulness, there was a lot of sleepless nights, I know, people agonizing over this. This is not pleasant, and everything on this list is of value. I want to emphasize that over and over again. Every one of these things has value. We wouldn't fund it if it didn't have value. And I'm hoping that in the future, there's a greater understanding of what our needs are, and there's a greater understanding from the public, not just in Elmhurst, but generally, about the cost of education, what the real cost is, and that public education is not free by any sense of the imagination. I think Elmhurst is credited for having the kind of program it does. It's really an outstanding public school program that's broad, that has depth, that has all the things that I think a lot of communities would love to have. We're going to work as hard as we can to maintain that. But as Chris pointed out, unfortunately, the numbers don't allow us sometimes the kind of flexibility we would like to add those programs and services that could even enhance us more. So, again, thanks to everybody for this process. Thanks for the discussion tonight, and we will move forward from this point on.
Next item on our agenda is the announcement of upcoming meetings. We have our regular Board of Education meeting next Tuesday, April 10th, here at 7:30. Our business and reorganization meeting will take place Tuesday, April 24th, here at 7:30. In between, we have two committee meetings, on April 12th at 7 o'clock, the Performance Management Committee, and on April 18th at 6:30, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Are there any board communications? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Ms. Ebbner. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you for listening.